A member of the Land Use Committee of the RTM last term, so he's happily serving on this board. Our vote on Mr. Barata was 11 in favor, none opposed, District 5 absent.
Thank you. John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
I don't have much to add to Mr. Berg's report. Mr. Barata had just come before us in June of this year, and he's being appointed to a one-year interim term, so he will come before us again in the fall of next year. The Appointments Committee vote was 10-0-0 in favor of recommending his appointment with three and District 3 and District 10 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 9. Item 15 now comes before us. Tyler Fairbairn, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Thank you very much for having our item on tonight. This is item number 15. We've submitted a resolution to amend our annual action plan for CDBG funding that was previously approved by the RTM in December of 2017. Tonight, we've submitted an updated revised resolution. Nothing substantive has changed. We've added the request of the Legislative and Rules Committee, a semicolon to line six of the second paragraph, changed the word "of" to "and" in line seven of the second paragraph, and made the same changes in lines two and four, respectively, of the third paragraph.
Great. So this is a substitute resolution incorporating changes suggested by Legislative and Rules.
Yes.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item 15. Now, does anyone need any further description of the changes? They were some legal citations. All right. The substitute resolution on Item 15 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Fairbairn, we're going to get the committee reports first. Now, I understand we are required to hold a public hearing on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Any member of the public is welcome to speak after we hear the committee reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Last Tuesday, Health and Human Services met with Tyler Fairbairn, the Community Development Administrator, to review the proposed amendment to the block grant action plan. And in the interest of full disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Block Grant Advisory Committee, and two Health and Human Services members, Patty Roberts and Sam Tam, also serve on that committee. This item represents an amendment to the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Award that the RTM approved in December of 2017. Since the RTM approved the program year 2018 recommendations, and we now have an additional $329,000, that's why it's before us again in the form of an amendment. So how did we get $329,000? During program year 18, it was unclear what the federal government was considering when it came to funding block grant. There was talk that funding might be reduced or eliminated altogether. So the advisory committee took a very conservative fiscal approach and set aside approximately $246,000 in a contingency fund. Contingency funds can be used for a project proposed in program year 19 that can be started in program year 18, or it can be used for a new application, RFP, that can be started in program year 18. So the good news is, is that for program year 18, Greenwich was awarded more than we anticipated. We were given $803,000, which is about 11.7% over the previous year, thus freeing up the contingency funds, along with the additional funds we received, and a small amount of money returned to block grant that came from projects that came in under budget. So in total, we have $329,405.15 to work with. And this money, at this point, can only be used for capital projects, no programmatic funding. So RFPs went out in late spring, early summer. The advisory group received 18 grants, grant applications totaling about $1,454,000. Of those 18 applications, two were deemed ineligible by HUD standards. They were for office equipment, which we are not allowed to fund. And then the Greenwich Housing Authority, which initially submitted three requests, withdrew two of their three requests. So that brought us down to 14 grants up for consideration. In June, the advisory committee held a public hearing where all of the applicants provided additional details about their proposals. And then the committee members conducted site visits to see the scope of the project that was being applied for. So of the 14 programs that we were left with and that were eligible for HUD funding, the advisory committee recommended funding for nine applicants. And one of the most critical criteria that the advisory committee took into consideration was, is the program shovel-ready? And one reason that we were looking at shovel-ready projects is that in November of 2017, the town of Greenwich received a letter from HUD that was essentially failure to carry out the block grant program in a timely manner. And basically, what that means is that Greenwich was informed that they had 12 months until their next 60-day test to reach the 1.5 timeliness standard. And failure to meet that timeliness standard a second time meant that we could lose 100% of the amount in excess of the money that we were holding on to, which, I know it sounds very technical, but that's about $500,000, which is a ton of money. So the committee strived to balance the needs of the community with the limited block grant funds while also taking into consideration the timeliness considerations raised by HUD. And the advisory committee gave significant thought and consideration to each applicant before making a financial recommendation. It's federal money. It doesn't cost the town of Greenwich anything to participate in this program. So Health and Human Services voted 10-0-0 with districts 2 and 10 absent to support the advisory group's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took up this item last Monday evening. We also had Tyler Fairbairn at our committee to explain the issue. I have nothing more to add except our votes. On the merits, it was 11-0-0 with District 1 absent. We didn't take a vote as to legal order because our committee noted that in the resolve clause, the second resolve clause, and the third further resolve clause, there was language missing, and we knew it wasn't right. So Mr. Fairbairn said that he would circulate changes if he found the language was inadequate. He found those changes, and those were circulated, the amount of Scrivener's errors. I circulated that among our members, and nobody had any objection as to legal order, although we did not take an official vote.
Thank you. Rob Perelli-Mannetti, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met to consider this item last Monday night. I have very little to add to the very good description given by Alexis and by Tyler. Tyler Fairbairn also presented the item to us. The Finance Committee vote was 12-0-0 in favor of the item.
Thank you. This being a public hearing on the item, is there anyone who would care to speak to it? All right. I will keep the public hearing open while we take up our last combined item, which is Item 17. That's the condemnation commission item. Who is presenting that? Mr. Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Sorry. Mr. Moderator. It's Item 17. It's to consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Appointments Committee and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Be it resolved that the Charter of the Town of Greenwich, Connecticut, Article 12, Public Works, Section 157A, 2, condemnation commission be amended to read as is found in the call. Mr. Moderator.
All right. So same as it appears on the call. And that's offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So that does not require a second. Let's hear from the committees that considered this. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I made a mistake. Technically, the Appointments Committee did not vote on this particular issue, so I guess it does require a second.
All right. Well, actually, this is, so let me back up here. This is a proposed amendment to the Charter. And as such, it has to be initiated with the Board of Selectmen in this case, which they have done. So why don't I just ask, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
Move.
All right. The resolution on Item 17 has been moved and seconded. And by the way, pursuant to our charter, any charter amendment must be approved by a majority of the membership, which would be 116 members. Mr. Wells.
Last Monday evening, we had Catherine Hines, who is a member of our Legislative and Rules Committee and delegate from District 10, and she had served on the RTM Special Committee on the condemnation commission charged with preparing this amendment to the Charter. And she reported on this item to us. The duties of the condemnation commission were described in the Charter by referring to powers and duties formerly exercised by the Highway Commission and the Sewer Commissioners, but those duties and powers were not specified in recent documentation. The Appointments Committee needed to know what the duties and powers of the commission were so that the Appointments Committee could appoint commissioners having experience and skills necessary for that work. The Law Department worked with the Special Committee to develop this revision to the Charter. The Law Department's prepared an executive summary which explains what the condemnation commission does. The condemnation commission's jurisdiction extends only to highways, sewers, and public parking. Accordingly, the amendment to the Charter is limited to those areas. The condemnation commission does not deal with flood control, condemnation of land for educational purposes, or other matters. It does assess costs of projects and benefits flowing from the projects within its jurisdiction. Eugene McLaughlin also presented to our committee from the Law Department, and he explained how the condemnation process is regulated by several state statutes in the Town Charter. The Special Committee prepared a flow chart which shows the condemnation process, and it was suggested by the proponents of this resolution that the executive summary and the flow charts be incorporated into the appendix of the RTM rules. The L and R Committee voted to delete the comma which appears in the fourth line of Paragraph 2 between the words highways and construction, the one at the end of the word "and." Our vote on this motion was 11-0-0 with District 1 absent. Took a vote as to legal order, and on the merits, it was the same, 11-0-0 with District 1 absent. We also moved to incorporate the executive summary and the flow charts that are attachments to the call into the appendix of the RTM rules. Our vote on this motion was 11-0-0, and at the appropriate time, I'll come back and make that motion.
All right. Fine. Thank you. And Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works took up this item. As you know, it's an item to amend Section 157A of the Town Charter by consolidating all condemnation commission references.
Can everybody hear the speaker?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Better?
Louder.
Better.
Bring it. All right.
Have to get closer? Can you hear me now? Oh, yes. I got it. Got it. This item amends Section 157A of the Town Charter by consolidating all condemnation commission references that are in the current Charter. John Eddy speaking as Chair of the Subcommittee explained that there was a need to identify all the references contained in the different places in the existing Charter. He stressed the fact that the roles of the commission have not changed. The only change made in this section of the Charter was the addition of parking to their jurisdiction. The vote was 11-0-0, District 1 absent.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The vote on this item by the Land Use Committee was 11-0-0, District 5 absent.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wells, at this time, I think we have a motion to amend that we'll dispose of.
Yeah. It really isn't a motion to amend so much as it is to follow the suggestion made by the Special Committee.
Well, no, I'm just talking, we were going to get rid of a comma, I think, right?
Oh, yes. Thank you. In the fourth line of Paragraph 2, there is a phrase that says highways and construction. The comma after the word "and" should be deleted.
The copy I'm looking at has that at the end of the third line, but...
All right. My mistake.
All right. So that is a motion to amend offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee. Does not require a second. All those, is there any objection to that amendment? Hearing, none. That is adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Now, what I'm going to do is call for a vote on this item, and then you can offer a sense of the meeting resolution.
It's a committee motion, but...
But it's not amending a call item.
No, it's beyond the call item.
All right. So let's vote on this. I'll call on you before I proceed to any separate items. All right. Discussion on Item 17. All right. I'll go back to Item 15. Anyone in the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant? All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing on Item 15, and I will ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards, combined calendar items 9, 15, and 17, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right. I do have the result of the vote on our consent calendar items. Those were Items 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 13, and 14. Those in favor, 174. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. Mr. Wells. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
So in the explanatory comments, the report from the Special Committee of the RTM, recommendation number two, it says have the town attorney's office summary, executive overview, and flow charts attached, preserved to ensure that they remain an available resource to the RTM and the Appointments Committee in particular. We, the Committee, the Legislative and Rules Committee, took that to heart, and assuming that this item will pass, it is our motion that those two items, the executive summary and the flow chart, be incorporated into the appendix of the RTM rules. That vote was 11-0-0, District 1 absent.
All right. So the Committee is, in essence, moving to amend the RTM rules to include those two items in the appendix.
In the appendix.
All right. And Mr. Fox, I would rule that this is related to Item 17 sufficiently that we don't need a motion to take it up. All right. And Mr. Fox agrees with that. All right. So what is now before us is a motion from our Legislative and Rules Committee to amend the RTM rules to include the executive summary and the flow chart prepared in connection with this condemnation commission special committee into the RTM appendix. Discussion on that motion. Is there any objection to the adoption of that motion? Hearing, none. That may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. All right. We will now proceed to the separate items. All right. The first is Item number four. That is the contract with the Silver Shield. Al Kava, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Item four is a resolution approving the funding of the four-year labor settlement between the town and the Silver Shield Association. It is as it appears on the call. Thank you.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item four has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Labor Contracts Committee met on October 2nd. We had five members. No of the alternates were, none of the alternates were able to attend. We had Mr. Kava presenting on the item. He provided an overview of the negotiation process, took us through the various meetings. This covers a four-year period of time. This, so you know, is one of the last ones of a cycle of contract negotiations. The next item, number five, is the first contract of what is seen as the next cycle of contract negotiations. That's important because it's nice to close the door and move on to the next round. The Labor Contracts Committee discussed a number of items, including the GWI, the increases. We found them favorable. They track consistently with the Teamsters and the other agreements that we've recently negotiated, and they also track against the GOSA agreement that's coming up next. So we find consistency a good thing. We also looked at the transition or the introduction of a defined contribution plan. So that means that as of January 1st of 2019, new police officers entering the town would be covered for retirement through a defined contribution plan, would not be eligible to be part of a defined benefit. So this closes the door for the Silver Shield members on participation in defined benefit. And I believe the explanos provided very good information showing the cost differences to the town between a defined contribution and a defined benefit. We see this as advantageous to the town and a positive thing. In order to get that, the town agreed to include a cost of living increase to those members that are participating in the defined benefit plan. There are certain restrictions or limitations on the cost of living increase that allow it, you know, not to grow out of, just totally get crazy. It won't increase more than 3% in any cycle, nor will it increase 150% of the benefit over the lifetime of the individual. So there are limitations on how that cost of living increase can impact our people. In the explanatory comments, you saw that over about a 30-year period of time, it's going to save the town over $20 million. Initially, the first eight to 10 years, there is a higher cost of funding the retirement programs, but after that, as new police officers are coming in, the cost to the town slows down significantly, and over the life of this nets out a $20 million savings to the town, which is not insignificant, as we all can see that. We also saw an increase to the employees' contribution to the defined benefit. So again, increasing the cost-sharing activity was an element that the Labor Contracts Committee has felt strongly about. And then it formally adopted the police, the Silver Shield members participating in the state health plan. There were ones that went through an interim agreement and joined the state health benefit plan, healthcare plan, and that saved over $1 million in the recent budget cycle. And so that, again, was something very positive that Labor Contracts saw. There are some concerns that we had, but overall, we found this agreement very positive for the town. We felt it's good for the employees as well. We voted unanimously, 5-0-0, to recommend that this item be approved. So please approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Perelli-Mannetti, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Yeah. The Finance Committee took this item up last Monday. We heard from Al Kava. We heard from Josh Brown from Labor Contracts. We discussed a number of the issues that he described, the benefits of this contract. One thing I would note that people don't always remember, and that is that the police do not have Social Security. This is, you know, unusual. They made a decision a long, long time ago not to have Social Security. So these pensions are what they have. But overall, this was a positive agreement. One of the things that comes up is, you know, should we vote to postpone indefinitely, which is basically allowing it to go into effect, or should we positively, affirmatively vote to support it? And we typically, Labor Contracts recently, and finance typically have voted, recommended that you vote to postpone indefinitely. This is a change. In this contract, the Finance Committee voted 12-0-0 to recommend approval. And the primary reason for that is we really wanted to send a strong message about our support for the move to the defined contribution plan. We're going to, hopefully, we'll move there with a fire, firefighters next time when we do their contract. And overall, we thought that this was a very positive contract. Thank you.
Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Town Services met last Tuesday. Mr. Brown has already given you a great synopsis. We had the same discussion. We looked at the COLAs. We just thought that was okay. The one concern we've had was the fact that, for years, we've been told that it would be hard to hire new police officers in town and keep them here if we did not have a defined benefit pension plan. We will, we were told that they could come, work here, train for two years, which they have to without paying us back, and that they then might leave if a defined benefit job came up somewhere else. So we discussed with Mr. Kava, and they are going to look and watch this to make sure that we're not having a problem. Two, three years out, we want to make sure our officers are staying here. We do train them. We want long-term officers who know us, who know the town. So that will, that's the only concern we had, but we were, I think we agreed that it will be watched carefully. And with that, we voted 11-0-0 with District 7 absent. Thank you.
Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee. Good evening. As is customary, the Budget Overview Committee took up both labor contracts that appear on the RTM call. We want to begin by thanking both the Silver Shield Union leadership and the town's labor negotiator, Al Kava, for their patient deliberations that settled the contract without arbitration. We also want to thank Mr. Kava for responding to the BOC's request for benchmark information to give the committee valuable insight on comparative costs and work rules across the 24 Fairfield County peer towns. We hope this repository of key labor information continues to grow and be updated. The Silver Shield contract is a large, complex, four-year, $95 million agreement, retroactive to 2017 through 2021, covering 145 employees. The BOC feels the contract is competitive and within public and private sector employment trends. The BOC was exceedingly pleased with the continued Teamster contract patterning, in particular, the general wage increase levels. Further, the BOC was pleased with the union's immediate acceptance and move to the state healthcare plan in 2017, saving the town $920,000. As you have heard earlier by my colleagues, the cornerstone result of the contract is the creation of a new Tier 3 retirement plan that phases out the defined benefit plan for new employees. It is a key reform for the long-term fiscal sustainability of the town's ever-growing so-called fixed costs. Your BOC spends a lot of time studying fixed costs in the operating budget. Some of you may not know that fixed costs make up a sizable 25% of the town's operating budget, and they are mostly comprised of healthcare and pension costs for both active and retiree employees, precisely implemented from each of these multi-year labor contract agreements. Consider, in our upcoming fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, it is projected by our actuary, the town will need to contribute $23 million toward the pension plan. Also, it is projected we will have $59 million in active and retiree employee healthcare costs. Combine these, $78 million in fixed costs is an increase of 9% over last fiscal year. It is these fixed costs that are growing and accelerating at a much higher rate than inflation, as well as Greenwich's economic growth, that has put enormous pressure on the town to maintain level services and therefore has required ever-higher property taxes to cover the costs. And to remind you, our tax-paying residents, as widely recently reported, between state and municipal taxes, face the highest overall tax burden of any state in New England and the second highest in the country. It should be noted in Connecticut, so-called peer Gold Coast towns in Fairfield County, facing the same fiscal pressures, the town of Ridgefield, Trumbull, Wilton, Newton, Brookfield have moved public safety personnel to DC plans. Westport has begun with a hybrid DB and DC plan. Finally, the Committee hopes and anticipates that the firefighter personnel follow the Silver Shield lead in the retirement pension reforms when they shortly begin their labor negotiations in early 2019. The BOC vote for the Silver Shield contract was a unanimous, full-acceptance vote of 12-0-0. Thank you.
Discussion on Item 4. Mr. Brown, did you want to? No. Discussion on Item 4. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number four. Proceed to poll your delegation. I have the result of the vote on the combined items. I have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those were Items 9, 15, and 17. Those in favor, 182. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 1. The combined items have carried. Item 5 now comes before us. Jennifer Dayton, Member of the Board of Education.
Good evening, members of the RTM. Resolved that the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich hereby approves the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Organization of School Administrators, representing our administrators for the period July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 5 has been moved and seconded. Joshua Brown, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Labor Contracts met on the 2nd of October with the five members. No alternates were able to make it. We had Jennifer Dayton, Peter Bernstein, Lauren Raven, Bob Stacy, and Al Kava assisting us with this item. Ms. Dayton provided an overview of the negotiation process, which commenced midsummer and ended not too, too long ago. This is a three-year contract covering from 2019 to 2022. This, as I mentioned, is the first contract. The GOCA agreement is technically always the first agreement that starts the next cycle. All of the labor contracts are in negotiation through this next calendar year. They all kick off in the next six, nine months. So it'll be an interesting time. A lot of the focus was spent covering the points that are covered in, well, in the explanatory comments. First, on the Gross Wage Increase, GWI, again, tracking very well, very favorably to the town. It's a little bit below what other districts recently had been negotiating as they were finishing off some rounds. And so that's a very positive sign for the town. One of the things that Labor Contracts had been looking for was the increasing the employees' contribution to their healthcare cost or healthcare benefits. So the GOCA body was one of the first to adopt the, was the first to adopt the state plan. They get kudos for that because that started a lot of movement in, in our town. But in, in so doing, we reduced the, the GOCA members' contribution for healthcare to 10%. And so this is a process now where through the life of each year of the contract, the employee will increase 1.5% more. So at the end of this contract, they'll be paying 16.5% of the healthcare, which again is something, cost-sharing is a key element in today's marketplace. So Labor Contracts was very pleased with that. One thing that was raised was an interest to have steps included such that bringing in a new administrator could be done at a lower salary scale than one that was here for 20 years. Today's program, if you're a new hire administrator, you're getting paid exactly the same as a person that's been here for a while. And the management law sought an ability to differentiate and be able to bring somebody in who's new, and then elevate them and bring them, you know, up to, up to scale, shall we call it. And Labor Contracts found that favorable. There was also an increase in the elementary principal's salary. Looking at the market, we were under what the market was driving and felt that it was reasonable to increase that to be able to attract and fill elementary school principal positions. So that was also very favorable. There were some concerns raised over tax sheltered annuity. It's a kind of a defined contribution retirement where the town contributes a lump sum, and the increase of that on a percentage basis was fairly significant. On a dollars basis, it was, you know, $700, $800, but on a percentage basis was fairly large. But that was well overweight by the positives of this contract. The other item that the Labor Contracts Committee discussed was an interest to have a provision included in this agreement such that if the state were to push pension costs for teachers or for the administrators, that we could reopen the negotiations and, and take that item up. That was decided not to be pushed as part of this agreement, but would be taken up on future agreements, including the GEA that's coming up. And so we'll look forward to seeing that. So a lot of positives, again, with this agreement. Labor Contracts voted unanimously 5-0-0 to request that the RTM approve this item as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Freitag, Secretary of our Education Committee.
Good evening. Your Education Committee met on Monday, October 15, and all 12 districts were represented. Item 4 contract was presented to us by Jennifer Dayton from the Board of Education, who led the contract negotiations. We also heard from Bob Stacy, Chief Human Resources Officer for the BOE, and from Josh Brown and Marita Hamray from the Labor Contracts Committee. Ms. Dayton explained to us that after several impasses in negotiation and a failed attempt at mediation, the parties had reached the agreement that's before us now and that the Board of Ed believes that it's very fair to both the town and the union. We considered all of the issues that were enumerated by Josh Brown in his reports, so I won't review them again. We also considered the fact that if we were not to, if we were to reject this contract, it would then go to binding arbitration, which would likely produce a less favorable result for us. No significant concerns about the contract terms were raised by any members of the committee, and the committee voted to approve the contract 12-0-0.
Thank you. Rob Perelli-Mannetti with the report of our Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee took this up last Monday. We had Ms. Dayton and Bob Stacy presented this to us. We had Josh Brown from Labor Contracts as well. The discussion on this was very similar to what you've heard from the other two, from both Labor Contracts and the other, and the Education Committee. Again, this was a first contract in a new cycle. We wanted to send a message that we were encouraging the kinds of moderate agreement that this is. There were some concerns raised at Finance about this agreement, in particular, the large increase in the tax sheltered annuity contribution, which is, which was a close to a 20% increase. That was a significant amount of money. But that aside, we supported the contract. The committee's vote was 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen with the Budget Overview Committee report.
As said previously, the BOC also took up the GOCA contract. We first want to thank the Board of Ed Labor Subcommittee for reaching out to various town stakeholders prior to their negotiations to receive input with our goals and objectives over the next three-year term contract. The BOC also appreciated the complete documentation with the results of the agreement, including a comprehensive Q&amp;A document, Fairfield County wage benchmark information, and cost of contract details. This is essential for the complete analysis of the agreement, and it is much appreciated. Like the Silver Shield contract, we hope the Board of Ed continues to collect and share greater benchmarking information, including all wage forms, such as the 403B, work rules, and healthcare and retirement fringe benefits. The new contract covers 55 administrative personnel over three years, from 2019 through 2022, at a cost of $32 million. The GOCA contract is significant in that it is the first contract after the Teamster retroactive period up until 2019. The BOC was very pleased with the moderated general wage increases that were similar in pattern to the Teamster contract. Further and as significantly was the increase in employee co-share of healthcare costs. As many of you will recall, over many contracts, the BOC has highlighted for both town and Board of Ed contracts, Greenwich employees are contributing the lowest co-sharing amount to the healthcare premium costs. We were therefore very pleased the Board of Ed had prioritized this as a negotiating area and the, and with the resulting amounts. A couple aspects to the contract, namely the 403B plan and the 1,250, two-year flat amount for elementary principals, was considered acceptable to keep the town competitive in the marketplace. One item of note, the committee was disappointed, was to learn that there was no mention in the contract of the potential teacher pension unfunded liability allocation. As we all know, the state has woefully underfunded the teacher pension plan, and today is only 56% funded. However, some say this is far understated when you consider their discount rate is set at 8.5%. With this, projections say annual costs could rise from $1.4 billion to $3.3 billion, or even $6.2 billion by early 2030. We would have liked to see some initial language that reopens the contract in the event of such an occurrence. With that said, the BOC was very pleased with the overall outcome of the new agreement and voted unanimously again with a vote of 11-0-0, with District 1 having to leave early from the BOC meeting. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Discussion on Item 5. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 5, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 6 now comes before us. We have the resolution on Item 6. Alan Brown, Director of Nathaniel Witherall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to present Nathaniel Witherall Resolution as published in the call.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm here to present the Nathaniel Witherall Resolution as it is published in the call.
All right. So Item 6 is the same as it appears on the call, and it has to do with an appropriation of funds for renovations being conducted to four nursing units, and it's an amount of $500,000. All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 6 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Alan Brown, Executive Director of Witherall, and Larry Simon, Chairman of the Nathaniel Witherall Board, walked our committee through this item. So first, I'm going to provide you a bit of history as how we arrived at this point. So in 2015, roughly $950,000 was appropriated to Witherall to fix the interior common room spaces in the tower portion of the building. The tower portion houses 156 long-term care residents. During Project Renew, which was 2012 to 2014, all of the patient rooms were remodeled, but the common areas, the dining rooms, the recreational room, the tub, the shower room, hallways, all of that, were not included in the project. So in 2015, a $950,000 appropriation was allocated for this project. After 18 months of preparing architectural plans, putting together a bid package, the project went out to bid in 2017 with the lowest bid coming in at $1.327 million. So in October of 2017, Witherall came before the RTM and asked for an additional $377,000, of which the town would be reimbursed by the Friends of Nathaniel Witherall for $200,000, for a net additional expense to the town of $177,000. So essentially, what started out as a $950,000 project was now a $1,327,000 project by October of 2017. The $377,000 appropriations approved, and construction begins on the fourth floor of the tower unit, March 18 of 2018. On June 6, 2018, a facilities inspector from the State Department of Health comes to look at the, the work that they're doing, and the inspector objected to the logistics of the work and the way the construction was being staged. The facilities inspector, who does nursing home licensing inspections for a living, and somewhat ironically, was also, is also a retired Greenwich firefighter, came to conduct a progress report survey and found that Witherall was in violation of the National Fire Protection Agency Code, specifically Code 241. So the issue was, is that during the construction, the corridors were divided in half with fire-rated sheet rock and a smoke partition, sort of like a plastic piece that goes up to the ceiling. However, since the ceiling was being replaced, the smoke partition failed, or in the event of a fire, would fail to prevent smoke from traveling from one side of the partition to the other. The architect contracted by Witherall sent a letter to the state, arguing that the state had improperly interpreted their fire code, and the state replied that failure to comply with the proper fire code could potentially result in the immediate jeopardy of their license, and the facility could be shut down. So that is clearly a very undesirable outcome. The project was then restaged. The construction would now take place in 25-foot increments. So each day, the ceiling would be taken down, the work would be done, so the plumbing, the electrical, the sprinklers, anything that needed to be done. And at the end of the workday, the ceiling would be reinstalled. So Mr. Brown explained that the typical eight-hour workday shrank to five hours because 90 minutes were spent at the beginning and end of each day assembling and disassembling the ceiling in order to continue with the renovation project. The $1,327,000 appropriation was able to cover the cost of the renovation for the fourth, second, and first floor, but it could not be stretched to cover the third floor, given the new labor costs associated with this project. And the third floor is the most vulnerable population in the facilities, the Alzheimer's unit. The new staging format, working in the 25-foot increments, caused the project to swell from a six-to-eight-week project per floor to a 12-week project per floor, with an estimated additional labor cost of $300,000. In addition to the $300,000 of additional labor, there's approximately $100,000 of unexpected change orders. Floors needed to be releveled, and there were some columns that, I guess, needed to be moved. Bringing the request to about $407,000, with a $42,000 contingency for a grand total of about $450,000, which is the revised interim appropriation amount, and I'll get to that in a minute. Also very important to note is that the Greenwich Building Department and the Greenwich Fire Marshal all signed off on this construction, on the construction plan drafted by the architect. It was the State Department of Health that overrode all of these approvals. And Dr. Brown, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown also mentioned that in 2004, there was a 200-bed nursing home fire in, in Hartford, and within 10 minutes, there were 16 fatalities. 10 people died on the premises, and then another six died shortly thereafter in hospital. So they were killed, and 23 were injured from this nursing home fire. And he believes that this tragedy plays an important role in how the state inspectors interpret the code. So Health and Human Services Committee recognizes that the project needs to be complete. We understand that some have characterized these refurbishments as cosmetic, but at our meeting, photos of the area in question were circulated, and we agreed that the crumbling and broken ceiling tiles, shower and tub rooms with gaping holes covered by cardboard and held together with duct tape, go beyond what one would typically define as cosmetic. However, despite our belief that the project warrants the funding, the Health and Human Services Committee is deeply concerned about the process, or rather, the lack of a good, structured, and predictable process that brought us to this point. Health and Human Services is acutely aware that coming off of the heels of the interim appropriation for the Julian Curtis Roof, another project that was grossly underbudgeted and required financial relief via an interim appropriation, that the RTM needs to establish a formal process that allows us to better understand how long-term, multi-phase capital projects are being managed. Members of Health and Human Services felt strongly that there needs to be a better system of managing and accounting for multi-year capital projects and a better system for tracking the expenses related to these projects. The committee acknowledges that the BET is attempting to establish some protocols to monitor capital improvement projects, but our committee believes that the RTM should also have a role in managing ongoing capital projects so we are not caught off guard when a, a project exceeds its budget. And just as an aside, the Governance Committee is considering some ideas around this, like creating a capital projects review committee. At our meeting, Health and Human Services made a motion to amend the appropriation to $450,000, which is the revised amount Nathaniel Witherall submitted to the BET in advance of their meeting scheduled for October 19. That motion passed with a vote of 10-0-1, with District 2 abstaining and 10 absent. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, Health and Human Services would be happy to offer that motion. Also, it should be noted that the money for this appropriation is coming from the Nathaniel Witherall fund balance account. And finally, I would like to thank Chairwoman Jill Oberlander for, for placing this item on the agenda last Friday during the BET's special meeting. Originally, the BET was slated to take this item up tomorrow evening after the RTM, which is the reverse order. is the reverse order of how things are customarily done. So I'm very grateful that she made the effort to put things in the proper order. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Perelli Minetti with the Finance Committee, report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we had Larry Simon and Bob Allen also bring this before us. As you can gather from the tenor of the latter part of the remarks from Alexis, we weren't real thrilled with the process on this either. In fact, we were very unhappy with it. There was a lot of sentiment in the Finance Committee that this really should not have come to us before it came to the BET. There was significant discussion of whether this could be put off until December. Larry Simon admitted that there would be absolutely no cost to putting it off to December, but he also said, "Well, but you won't learn anything new between now and December." There was a motion that was made to postpone this item to December. That motion failed 6-6. We then moved to amend the item to reduce it to 450,000, because that's what we understood was their final number. That passed 12-0-0, and the motion on the appropriation as it was passed 7-5. The districts voting against were not hap, again, very upset with the process, upset with the way Nathaniel Witherall has consistently cost the town significantly more than we were promised back when Operation Renew was started, and not happy with the way this was handled at all. Thank you.
All right. Alexis Vulgaris, you had some amendment?
Sure. So, on behalf of the Health and Human Services Committee, we are recommending that the appropriation be reduced to $450,000, which is also the amount that the BET has approved. So, would you like me to offer the wording of the new resolution? What would you like?
Well, you're just changing the dollar amount?
Correct.
All right.
The only thing is, is that in the resolution, as in the call, it says this appropriation is subject to be approval at their meeting on Tuesday, October 23rd. That should be removed, because it was...
All right, so you're moving to strike that final sentence?
Correct.
And to...
So, would you like me to read what it...
Well, or is it just those two changes?
Well, that, and then the total amount in the resolution would change from $1,827,000 to $1,777,000.
$1,777, oh, that's a lot of sevens. Maybe I'll play those numbers tomorrow.
[laughing].
All right.
You want me to just read it?
All right, so...
Let me just read it, okay? So...[793.11][793.11][laughing]. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of $450,000 is hereby appropriated for additional costs associated with completing renovation for the four nursing home units for a total cost of $1,777,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, the BET only approved 450,000, so...
That's correct.
I take it we cannot approve anything higher than that pursuant to the charter? So, is there any objection to the amendments that Ms. Vulgaris just read? Hearing none. Those amendments stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Discussion on Item 6. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 6 as amended? I do have the result of the votes on the two labor contracts. Item Number 4 was the collective bargaining agreement with Silver Shield Association. Those in favor, 181; opposed to abstaining, 0. That item has carried. Item 5 is the GOSA contract. Those in favor, 181; opposed to abstaining, 1. That item has carried. All right. So we are now voting on Item 6, and we will continue. Item 10 now comes before us, and I think Item 10 and 11 are in the same category. Is that, do I understand, Mr. Eddy? We're going to postpone these?
Yes.
All right. So, would you want to offer both of them, Mr. Tessie?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item Number 10 resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, R2, for a term expiring October 31, 2022, Arthur M. Dalmhorst.
All right, you want to just put the other one before us as well?
Item Number 11 resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Alarms Appeals Board, R5, for a term expiring June 30, 2021, Dennis Peter Yaski Jr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of those two resolutions? The resolutions on Items 10 and 11 have been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee?
Thank you. On October 2nd, the Appointments Committee voted 10-0-0 to postpone this item to the December meeting.
All right, now, is this for 10 and 11?
This is just for, this is just for 10. We actually met with Mr. Yaski, so perhaps...
All right, but...
But on behalf of the Land Use Committee?
No objection to postpone.
Nope, no, there's no objection to postpone.
All right, so, so you want to individually move to amend, to postpone?
Item 11 is, I individually move to vote, to postpone Item 11 as well.
All right, is there a second to that? All right, so, the motion to postpone both Item 10 and Item 11 now before us. All those in favor postponing 10 and 11 to our December meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion to postpone 10 and 11 has carried. Thank you. Item 12 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, this is a substitute resolution resolved that the following named person, Richard Maitland, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, R1, for a term expiring October 31, 2021. The correction was to the entity Planning and Zoning Commission, not the Board of Appeals.
All right, so the substitution is to make it clear, this is Planning and Zoning Commission. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on Item 12 has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. So we, the Land Use Committee interviewed Mr. Maitland last Monday night, and our vote on Item 12 was six in favor, five opposed. District 5, again, was absent. So Mr. Maitland is a full member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We started by asking why he wanted to serve another term. Mr. Maitland noted that he has served for 18 years. He is an architect by profession. He is fully retired, and he enjoys giving back. We spent about 90 minutes with Mr. Maitland. We asked about the state's population projection for Greenwich that shows the population declining by 20% by the year 2040. Mr. Maitland said he thought that a shrinking population is bad for the town, but he had no idea regarding what to do about it. He opposes taller apartment buildings. Mr. Maitland mentioned that the Board of Ed has a different population projection that shows an increase in school-age children. He seems to feel that Greenwich is a special place, and the state projections may not be accurate with regard to our town. He said if one knows the reason for people not coming here, then we can figure out how to fix it. Questions then ranged over a broad range of topics. One committee member argued for an increased FAR, so existing attics and basements could be used. Another argued for a reduced FAR to preserve the character of neighborhoods. Mr. Maitland pointed out that single-family residences, as long as they are under a certain size, do not come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, though the commission was responsible for changes to the zoning regulations. Regarding questions on specific properties, Mr. Maitland noted he could not comment on projects that were currently under litigation, for example, the Taconic Road Center for Hope and Recovery, the Chabad Synagogue, or projects that had not yet come before them, including a proposal by Greenwich Academy to install a daycare center on Maple Avenue. He did note that changes had been made a year ago, restricting development in the R6 zone, including properties on Field Point Road and other downtown streets, such as the one next to Town Hall, so that no more of those can happen. Candace Garthwaith of District 6, Old Greenwich, questioned why the MI process was so expensive, locking in projects like the Sound Beach Avenue Traffic Circle at Parat, because so much capital had already been expended. Mr. Maitland responded that the commission is looking to reduce the requirements for an MI. She also complained about deep basements in areas with high water tables, resulting in a process of, quote, "engineered flooding" that have been occurring. Mr. Maitland referred to the drainage manual, which requires retaining water on one's property for a specified period of time. One member questioned if the average resident stood a chance vis-à-vis developers without retaining lawyers, as happened at the Post Road Ironworks site. Mr. Maitland responded that the housing project on Sound Beach Avenue near the railroad station was rejected without expensive litigation by residents who opposed it. Though unfortunate, a member from District 3 questioned why Greenwich was continuing to build on contaminated properties. Mr. Maitland responded that all approvals require soil testing. Bill Galvin, a member of District 7 and a wetlands commissioner, questioned why P&amp;Z was seen as more of an advocate for developers, and asked what was the P&amp;Z's role going forward. In summary, Mr. Maitland argued that all zoning takes away some rights. He explained that regulations were continually evolving, however, regulations needed to evolve in the right way. He concluded by noting that Greenwich residents were able to introduce suggestions for changes in zoning regulations. So once again, our vote on Mr. Maitland was six in favor, five opposed. District 1 noted that was opposed based on opinions about the FAR. District 2 said he thought 18 years was long enough, and it was time for a change. District 3 argued there is a lack of due diligence regarding environmental regulations. District 7 noted that P&amp;Z appeared to be too biased toward developers. District 8 noted, also agreed, that it was time for a change. I guess I should mention that as the chairman, I do not vote. I allow my alternate to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee, report.
The Appointments Committee met with Mr. Maitland last Tuesday. One of the challenges in interviewing the sitting chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission was to keep discussion of his service and contributions, his personal service and contributions, within the commission, separate from comments directed generally about the town and how development has changed over the years. There were as many comments about the Planning and Zoning Commission and about its roles in town, and personal comments about how the change related, how the town has changed over the year, as there were those directed towards Mr. Maitland. When asked about his role and his criteria for making decisions, Mr. Maitland responded that his first responsibility is to uphold the town's code. When asked whether he had any regrets about decisions he's made, he stated that he can, he honestly feels that his decisions were well researched and consistent with code. When pressed by the same question for a yes or no answer, he replied that in light of the previous statement, no, he did not have any regrets, and he gave careful, thoughtful attention to every item that came before him. Discussion among the committee members at the end of questioning had the same issue with focus. There was, the consensus, although not unanimous, was that Mr. Maitland had performed conscientiously in his service, and had listened and responded to public opinions. After the vote had been taken, a member of the public in attendance, who was also a current member of the commission, expressed the viewpoint that Mr. Maitland has served as a good leader within the commission. He has been reelected unanimously, unanimously by the commission three times, holding elections each year for that position. The Appointments Committee vote was nine in favor, two against, one abstaining. District 1's unfavorable vote was due to fundamental intellectual disagreement with Mr. Maitland with respect to landscaping. District 2, who was also the same representative who voted at the land use meeting, felt that Mr. Maitland has served too long, and District 11 abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 12. Charlotte, Charlotte Walker?
First of all, thank you for allowing me to comment, and also, thank you for all the very important work you do for all the citizens of Greenwich. My name, as you know, is Charlotte Walker. I live in District 1 at 173 Putnam Park. I have lived in Greenwich for five years. However, I am a returning resident. Over 20 years ago, I lived in Old Greenwich. I am here to comment as a private citizen on the reappointment of Chairman Maitland to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am going to strongly urge the RTM to vote for a change, and I am going to offer the following observations. As an illustrative point, at the most recent workshop for our 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development, the consultants to the project put up a map of the Putnam Avenue corridor. Some of you may be very familiar with this, showing first what it looks like now, how it was developed. And then, they put up a map of what it would have looked like had all of our planning and zoning regulations been enforced. This was incredibly eye-opening for me, because what we have as a result of planning and zoning actions are larger, taller buildings with lesser setbacks, less green space that is allowed by our code. This was development by special permit, and this is seriously wrong. It does not allow any citizen in the town of Greenwich to know what can be built next to them. This creates huge property value uncertainty, and it makes a mockery of our zoning laws. Unfortunately, this is a practice that our Planning and Zoning Commission continues to entertain. In the words of our own 2009 POCD, "We need not resign ourselves to a community designed by change. We must continue to renew our spirit and commitment to a community by design." But we have to rely on a strong Planning and Zoning Commission, which is proactive, not reactive, to enact land use laws which support our planning, Plan of Conservation and Development. And I'm here to tell you that I do not think that that has been happening. As you know, a lot of development has taken place in Greenwich these past 18 years. This certainly was expected on my return here. However, what I did not expect, as in many towns that I have had experience with Planning and Zoning Commissions before, was its rapidity without a check by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The development of multifamily homes on Millbank Avenue is very illustrative of this point, and with considerable pushback by neighbors. Finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve new laws in the R6 zone, of which Millbank Avenue is part, that limits buildings to single- or two-family homes. I am thankful for this change, because I live in this area, but it comes many years too late. And in being so late, planning and zoning, single-handedly... And in being so late, planning and zoning, single-handedly, enabled the near destruction of Millbank Avenue neighborhood. Katie DeLuca ironically was quoted as saying upon the enactment of these changes, something straight from the Plan of Conservation and Development, “These types of developments,” she said, “are not in keeping with the traditional development patterns, and they generate opposition from the neighbors for being out of scale and generating too much change to the neighborhood.” Really? So unbelievably, my concerns and those of many other citizens who have spoken before the Planning and Zoning Commission and protested against certain projects are still wondering what is happening here. Our concerns have not stopped. There are many controversial projects. Peter Berg just mentioned them. Let me just remind you, these are projects which have had forceful pushback by citizens. In some cases, people have been successful, in other cases, citizens have not. Those are the recent text amendments, including the increase in the FAR expansion for education institutions in the residential zones, a proposed 44-unit apartment building on Sound Beach Avenue, the old Greenwich Rotary Plan, and the still-in-progress application to build a new synagogue downtown in the Armory, which has all sorts of issues regarding setbacks, historic district commission concerns, and more. Some of you may think, “Not in my neighborhood,” and many of you may not have been affected by some of these projects. All I can say is with this Commission, I think our experience will be, “Well, wait a minute. It’s coming to your district very soon.” And by the way, not in my neighborhood, it is. It’s the neighborhood of Greenwich, and it affects all of us, and it affects our property values. As I have read about and listened to the controversies around these projects, I cannot help but think but what on earth Planning and Zoning was thinking by even entertaining these applications for as long as they did. I am very annulled, and it’s custom for the job of the P&amp;Z to be so much easier on everyone if the Commission acted first to ensure that our land use laws follow the intention and the mandate of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and then, for gosh sakes, enforce our land use laws, rather than retrofit application through special permit, which is what’s been happening. I really cannot see how our current Planning and Zoning Commission has done the town of Greenwich any favors in these last many years. I have found the P&amp;Z Commission to be conciliatory to developers, deaf to neighbors, except under extreme duress, easy with the pen on special permitting and special exceptions, and highly inconsistent. It is up to this body to oversee, provide oversight, and course correct via its appointments. And I hope that you all will take my comments into consideration, as well as the hundreds of other citizens who have spoken before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a very hard job that Chairman Maitland fills, and one that requires complete confidence of all citizens. I commend and thank Chairman Maitland for his fortitude, his perseverance, and service these last 18 years. However, the record does speak, and it’s time for a change.
All right, I have the result. Before I continue, I have the result of the vote. On Item Number 6, which is the appropriation for the Nathaniel Witherell renovations. Those in favor, 161; opposed, 17; abstaining, 5. That item has carried. Is Mr. Ted Walworth here? He will be our next speaker, followed by Doreen Pearson.
I am Ted Walworth. I live in District 11 at 239 Teconic Road. I am also the president of the Northeast Greenwich Association, covering 25% of the town’s territory and 15% of its population.
All right, we’re having trouble hearing you, so if you could try and speak into that and keep your voice up.
I get to do it again. I’m Ted Walworth. I live in District 11 at 239 Teconic Road. I am also the president of the Northeast Greenwich Association, and I am here to oppose the reappointment of Mr. Maitland to Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Stanwich neighborhood has a pending action in Hartford in Superior Court against the P&amp;Z opposing a 10-person, fee-charging, professional psychology group doing business as the Greenwich Center for Hope and Renewal. It is located in the old Stanwich Church, which is directly on my property line, not one foot of setback, was honored. During deliberations, Chairman Maitland cited that the building in which the offices are housed, that that building was a charity. Where is that in the zoning regs? When is a building a charity? This is not the time or place to litigate this matter, but suffice it to say that tens of thousands of dollars have been spent, and will be spent, defending the historic residential area called Stanwich. We also had the support of the Round Hill Association and the Northwest Greenwich Association as a precedent was being set. This fell on deaf ears. We oppose the reappointment due to the failure of the P&amp;Z to recognize that it is a business operating in an RA4 residential zone that is to be free of any business. This is not for-free pastoral counseling, but 10 independent practitioners who have taken office space eight feet from the road. Should any special exception be granted, a 100-foot setback from myself and my neighbors is required by municipal code. We oppose this reappointment because we believe that there is an institutional bias on the P&amp;Z favoring development without consideration of the quality of life or the effects on neighbors and the devaluation of their properties. Any single neighborhood can be overwhelmed by large institutions with deep pockets to hire lawyers to lobby the P&amp;Z. They know they can outspend a few people trying to protect their investment. We had a consultant opine that there would be a severe reduction in value to adjacent homes to the center if they could be sold at all. There was no acknowledgement from the P&amp;Z. It has now come to the point where neighborhood associations need to come together to form an organization to protect the taxpayers of the town from its own P&amp;Z. With that in mind, it is time for a change at the top. We need someone who will protect the essential characteristics of neighborhoods, which is the charge, and should be priority one of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please vote no. Thank you.
Doreen Pearson, to be followed by Quentin Pearson.
Thank you for letting me discuss this with you. I was not prepared for this this evening at all. I’m here in support of my neighborhood. I can only repeat every word that Charlotte Walker has just so eloquently explained to you, along with Ted. I’ve gotten to know these people only recently in fighting the battle for my own neighborhood. I have lived on Maple Avenue and run the Stanton House Inn with my husband for 32 years. We abide by the zoning rules. We are a legally, historically non-conforming property that was so designated sometime before the 1940s. We have always been good neighbors. We have always abided by any limitations that were placed upon us by the fact that it is a residential neighborhood. Now we are threatened by Greenwich Academy’s purchase of a property that abuts our property. It was a residential home that was on the market for some time at a much higher price. The home is historic. It’s already received historic overlay back in 1979, I believe. It’s a small piece of property with a very important, large, old home. The Academy waited, and then, after making a bid for our property and being refused, turned to the next property and bought it at a bargain basement price. Well, of course, they can buy it at a bargain price. They don’t pay taxes. They don’t pay property taxes. Those property taxes get shifted to all of us on all of these tax-exempt properties. I totally oppose the reappointment of Mr. Maitland, because he has been part of this issue. He supports these tax-exempt 501Cs beyond taxpayers and residents of the town. We’re residents for 42 years. We attended every meeting through the summer with the FAR changes and the amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code. We all expressed our displeasure. There were wonderful arguments. There are people, I’m only new to this whole movement, but there are many people who are so articulate and so erudite on the entire process and on the entire changes that have been going on. We’ve tried to bring ourself up to par very quickly, because we feel it’s our only defense. We’ve been told that Greenwich Academy can’t be beaten. They have extremely deep pockets, way deeper than the taxpayers in Greenwich have. They’re accumulating property off of the tax roll at an unbelievable pace all over our neighborhood. Maple Avenue is still a residential neighborhood, and they propose to open a commercial daycare center for 60 children and create at least 20 additional parking spaces in this half-acre lot on a heavily burdened road already. The Academy and Brunswick rent parking spaces all over Maple Avenue. They rent them behind the Women’s Club. They rent them from us. They rent them from the Second Congregational Church. They’re already way overburdening the neighborhood. We have a domino effect going on here. Every time they pick up a residential piece of property and take it off the tax rolls, the next lot is devalued, and they wait for those people to sell out to them. There are three more properties that are right in their pathway right now. These are people who live there forever and depend on these properties for their retirement. They want to stay there. It’s a walkable neighborhood, and yet we’re all outbid by the private schools. In some of the meetings this summer, and I think it was one of the first selectmen, who questioned the board and said, “Are you opening yourself up to new lawsuits?” They challenged Planning and Zoning and said that. Planning and Zoning brought in Hartford lawyers with a lot of mumbo jumbo, but I am telling you, they are courting lawsuits. I have a neighborhood right now that is very activated and really wants to bring in legal counsel. We’re trying to deal with this as just residents in a nice residential area, protecting what we’ve known for 50 years. This also does apply, as Ted said, to all the religious institutions in town. They’ll all get this overlay. They’ll all keep continuing to run business after business off their properties. We’re sandwiched right now behind the Second Congregational Church. I can’t tell you how many businesses operate out of that property. My own home is adjacent to them. It is a residential lot. It’s a modest home. I’m overwhelmed by their daycare center, by their Act Two boutique, by their Boy Scout meetings in the evenings. I can’t tell you how many other activities go on there, and a very large childcare center. So if Greenwich Academy gets their way, my property, which is legally non-conforming and has the right to operate as we operate, will be devalued and squeezed between two large daycare centers. Would you stand by and let that happen to your property, no matter what neighborhood The special permit and the loss of the zoning Board of Appeals are horrendous. We have no recourse. The whole process has been short-circuited, so that there is hardly time to react and to protect your neighborhood. We hardly had any notice when Greenwich Academy purchased the property at 96 Maple Avenue. In quick succession, they purchased the lot behind it, and they combined them. They’re doing this to create larger FARs for their campus. It’s at the expense of the entire neighborhood. Maple Avenue really cannot support any more traffic. They tell us they’ve done their traffic study. I watch the traffic every single morning, and it affects everyone from the North Country, everyone that uses the back roads. It is queued up to the post road almost every morning, and they want to add 60 more trips.
One minute.
I’m sorry that I didn’t organize my thoughts better tonight, but I want you to know that we hosted a neighborhood meeting last night. We have growing support for this, and Mr. Maitland is not the person we want to chair the board any longer. We feel that he’s very soft on developers, and he’s not taking the best interest of Greenwich taxpayers and neighborhoods to heart. Thank you.
All right, before I call on our next speaker, I know some of you are wondering how timing works. Absent a motion to limit debate, Robert’s Rules provides 10 minutes per speaker. Our first speaker took nine minutes. Our third speaker took nine minutes. David Rudolph, District 6.
I’m.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to limit debate to three minutes. Motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate for the balance of this meeting?
I’m.
You have a point?
I have a district. I have a district. I’m.
All right, but there’s no debate on this. So if you want to vote against this, you are free to do that, and it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All right, we see that there are speakers lined up. We see that there are speakers lined up. If you are in favor of limiting debate to three minutes per speaker, you vote in favor. If you want to continue to allow up to 10 minutes, you vote no. All those in favor of limiting debate for the balance of the meeting to three minutes per speaker, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. That motion is carried. Our next speaker is Quentin Pearson to be followed. Is it Jason Medhurst? To be followed by Mr. Medhurst. All right. Jason Medhurst. Mr. Berg, are you waiting to speak? To be followed by Peter Berg.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. I'm Jay Medhurst, from District One member. I rise to oppose the reappointment of Mr. Maitland and ask that the members of the RTM join me in voting no. It is time to change the P&amp;Z and be more responsive to the wishes of our residents and respectful to the character of our community. The single most popular issue I hear from District One residents is the transformation of Millbank Avenue, which has largely occurred during Mr. Maitland's tenure on the P&amp;Z. The residents ask me questions like, "Why did you allow that beautiful 100-year-old house to be bulldozed? How does a three-story French chateau end up on the corner of Millbank and Lincoln? That doesn't fit the character of our neighborhood. Why is our neighborhood being ruined?" These questions bother me, but what stops me in my tracks is the sense of resignation my constituents express. And they tell me, "We've gone to the P&amp;Z meetings, and we don't feel listened to. It's us on one side, developers with their lawyers on the other. Who has the interests of the neighborhood at heart? Who is listening to us? It is not the P&amp;Z, it seems." When citizens don't feel heard, when they feel outmatched by deep pockets, when they take the time and the effort to engage in the process only to end up feeling cheated, it begins to tear at the fabric of community. That community and sense of shared values is one of the most important things we are here to help foster and protect. I've heard my constituents, and that's why I'm voting to change—for a change on the P&amp;Z. I encourage you to join me, to join your constituents, and to vote no on the reappointment of Mr. Maitland to the P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Peter Berg, District Eight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm simply speaking as an individual, and I would just note that the comments that have been made so far are about the commission, I believe, not about Mr. Maitland as an individual. I have watched him in action as a zoning commissioner. He is clearly the hardest-working member of the commission. He comes to the meetings highly prepared. He challenges applicants on many details. So if we were simply voting on Mr. Maitland to be reappointed to the commission, I would strongly recommend to vote yes. And I'm reminded of the first selectman upstate that I heard about who nominates his worst enemies to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The problem here, of course, is that Mr. Maitland is the chairman of the commission, and what you're—and what I heard at the Land Use Committee, what you're hearing here tonight, is dissatisfaction with the commission. And it's important right now because, as you know, the commission is in the process of writing the next plan of conservation and development. And that plan is intended to be our vision for the future of the town. And if you look back at the last plan of conservation and development in 2009, it called for a number of goals that I don't think we've made much progress on. For example, it calls for a more vibrant and vital downtown. And while the previous speakers have been complaining about overdevelopment in the downtown, I would submit to you that we have a downtown that's lost over 40% of its population over the last 40 years. It's not gaining any. The new development you're seeing on Millbank and Mason, for example, is mostly attracting empty nesters. The principal at the elementary school told me she hasn't gotten any students from the new construction of residential in our downtown.
30 seconds.
So I think we need a visionary leader for this new POCD, one who can somehow explain to—particularly to the people in District One—that we do need to create more residential for a diverse group of people, including younger people, as Stanford has been very successful in doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Quigley to be followed by Dr. Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I didn't come here tonight with the intent of speaking on this issue, but in listening to everyone's thoughts, as a person who lives on West Elm Street in District One, I wanted to add what I think is some interesting info. I'm kind of agnostic on Mr. Maitland. I don't know him well. I know he's been on the Planning and Zoning Board for a long time. When you get to 18 years, maybe it is time for a change. But I would also mention that there have been other developments in downtown Greenwich recently, including a 60-unit condominium complex in Benedict Place and a large townhouse complex at the base of Millbank Avenue, which have been rejected by the P&amp;Z. And in thinking about this issue recently, I did go back and read articles in past Greenwich Times and New York Times with regard to developments that took place in Greenwich years ago, whether it was the demolition of the hotel that used to be at Pickwick Plaza or the demolition of the old estate at One Millbank, or knocking down buildings on Greenwich Avenue that existed when I was a kid and I always took them for granted, or the food mart that used to be across from the movie theater, which is now the Apple Store. I can remember, and in reading these articles, I can see that there were visceral reactions by people in District One when these things were done. No one likes change. We all want to hold on to things. But we also have to view our town as a constantly changing place. Things change. Economics change. People want to live downtown. More people find it more attractive to be downtown. So in examining these issues, I think we all have to take a step back and look back at history and realize that every time there's been movements or pushes to change the town's look, change the development around town, make it—take it curved to the left or right, there's always been pushback. And pushback is good. And residents of District One and other residents of the town who have strong opinions should go to the P&amp;Z meetings and should voice their opinions and go to the planning and zoning—planning and development meetings, like they had at Greenwich High School a couple weeks ago, and voice their concerns. As I said, I'm kind of agnostic about Mr. Maitland himself. I'm probably inclined to vote to not reappoint him, only because I think 18 years is a long time.
30 seconds.
But I do want to encourage all of my fellow RTM members here tonight to think realistically about the town itself and how it has to change for the future. Not all change is bad, and everyone has gone through this before and felt the same way. Thank you very much.
Dr. Carl Carlson, District One, to be followed by Arlene Lamazo.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I was born in Greenwich into District One exactly 69 years and one month ago. My perspective throughout my whole life has been one of District One itself. I've only lived on two streets, and they are perpendicular to each other in District One. My perspective is the town of Greenwich has been basically in a mild decline over the last 30 years. I think that P&amp;Z has contributed to this, with perhaps some acceleration over the last two decades. Two former chairmen of the Planning and Zoning Commission have apologized to me privately for decisions they made touching myself. I think Mr. Maitland should not be returned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's been there for 18 and a half years. I think the current way the development has gone in District One has become a bit more negative than it was in the past. I would point out to you that the developments on the east side of Millbank Avenue, close to the intersection of Lewis Street, seem unusually strong, and they look like four units stuck on one lot. But these are allowed. There's a problem in that, and there's a problem how it's all developed. I suggest that a first step in trying to rectify matters is to replace Mr. Maitland with someone else. Thank you.
Arlene Lamazo.
Speaking as an individual citizen, I've lived in town more than 55 years, and during that time, I have attended planning and zoning meetings that were chaired by different people. Mr. Maitland is the most recent, but in all my observations over time, I think he's done an outstanding job. What I'm hearing tonight is that individuals have concerns about zoning matters that are very particular to them, but they're holding Mr. Maitland responsible for what the commission decides. That is grossly unfair. This is—and to have served for 18 years with his background is something we should continue and not block. We're holding a man responsible for something that a commission does, not he alone. Please bear that in mind and vote to keep him.
Baron Snyder, District Seven, to be followed by Dean Gamanos.
I just wanted to say I agree with actually everything that's been said tonight. I agree that the change is unfortunate and all the different neighborhood complaints are legitimate. However, I also agree with the gentleman from District One and that—I think it's more than Mr. Maitland and the commission. I think it's just the development that's happening in this town, and we have to get involved. I think from what I've seen—I've attended lots of POCD meetings, hearings, workshops, briefings, and what I hear is the commission really supports preservation and the character—the New England character that makes Greenwich so special. Honestly, as I went to hearings on Benedict Court and other post-road ironworks, et cetera, you know, I was very militant that, you know, we have to make planning and zoning, you know, come out with the right decisions. But what I've seen is they pretty much have been where they can. I would submit that you ask yourself, "How often have you gotten involved and voiced your opinion and helped guide their decisions and give them some support to make the right decision before you vote?" I would support Mr. Maitland with all his experience and knowledge, and I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Dean Gamanos, District Seven.
Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members, like one of the prior speakers, I am impartial about Richard Maitland. I hear from some sources that he's very knowledgeable, very hardworking, and I believe that I've attended several P&amp;Z meetings. But one of the previous speakers mentioned that we should step before the P&amp;Z if we have issues and continue to voice our opinions. And that's why I want to speak to you this evening, because there's a meeting coming up on October 30 regarding the new construction that's going up in front of the main firehouse on Mason Street. I'm also a member of the American Legion Post 29 and the Veterans Council here in Greenwich. And as a veteran, I'm opposed to that new construction because it's taking away part of the armory in its current plans, and it's a very large building, very little sidewalk space from the building to the—to Havemire, right opposite the fire station, and God forbid there be a fire, and people who are dealing with that new construction or are part of that congregation are in the way. It could lead to a safety issue. So it's one of those developments that's massive, that's large, that is a safety risk, but I think out of character for the town and the kind of issues that are being discussed tonight by some of the larger buildings and institutions behind them. So stay tuned for more information about this. I do want to correct one thing, though. I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission has taken a position on this yet. It's before the Historic Development Commission, so they are—have been asked by the P&amp;Z to offer a—an opinion on this, which is still forthcoming. But please stay tuned and do fight for your town. It's a great town. I think we all care about it, and I think we should care about our residences and our neighborhoods and not let these major developments take over. Thank you.
Candace Garthwaite to be followed by Sandy Litback.
Good evening. Candace Garthwaite, District Six, Old Greenwich, and I have to tell you that I'm very conflicted on this—on this item and this appointment. I definitely appreciate the commission and the time they take and the incredible hours that they put in. It is astounding. But as I've gone to numerous meetings and listened to people tonight, and also our own fight in Old Greenwich over the Rotary, I have many concerns, and the concern's really around neighborhoods and the protection of neighborhoods, because many areas of town have this institutionalization that's happening, where the private schools are, you know, really impacting their quality of life, safety, traffic, and really the assessment of their homes. And the—and—and also, many properties are being bought, and those properties are being taken off our tax rolls, and we should all be concerned about that. So that's happening at a pretty considerable rate. There is also this issue of the text amendment changes, and I can't really tell you specifically because I'm not an expert on it, but it's my understanding that the historical overlay amendment change could have considerable impact on the entire town. Historic residential buildings, I believe, are those that are 1940 and before. So that's a big portion of town in residential areas. And if you—if you own one of those homes within 1,000 feet of a commercial building, you may have some issues at play in the future. So these are the kinds of things that are going on, and the kinds of regulation changes that have occurred since the 2009 POCD are really astounding. We should have a workshop on it, really. We should be informed, because there is a lot of change happening that just happens. And now, in the midst of all this, we have the Plan of Conservation and Development, you know, that's been—you know, all kinds of money and consultants and meetings and all this fun going on, but we have these changes going on that are going into effect on Thursday. So I get confused. We're doing one thing over here, but we're doing another thing over there. So why is that? You know, who's really in charge here of planning for the town of Greenwich? So that's my concern, and at this point this evening, I'm going to have to vote no.
Sandy Litback, our selectman.
I had not intended to speak at all. I have listened carefully. I do have, to some extent, perhaps a slightly different perspective, at least than some of you. There are two or three points I want to make. Number one, I think you all know this. Getting people to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission is one of, if not the, most difficult choices there are. Lest you think that there are people lined up to do this, let me assure you, there are not. Nonetheless, we took this very seriously, and I will tell you—I just asked Peter whether I could repeat this, but I will. He said I could. We had Mr. Maitland backed twice. This wasn't done frivolously. This was done very carefully. And there were two things that led me, at least, to recommend his renomination. And I was concerned—those of you who know me know—I think 18 years on a commission— And I was concerned, those of you who know me know, I think eighteen years on a commission gives me pause for concern. But then I asked myself two things. Number one, who do I want, what kind of person do I want on the commission? I'd always like someone who always agrees with me. But that's not what you really want. You want someone who's dedicated, who spends the time and gives it thought. I will not agree, I am sure, with every decision that Mr. Maitland or anyone on that commission makes. I suspect a lot of what people have said tonight is absolutely accurate, and if I were voting, I might have agreed with them. But that's not the way I make a decision about who should serve on the commission. I have no doubt that he and the others gave this every serious consideration, and to suggest that there is some particular bias, their bias is to do what's right for this town. Mr. Maitland has lived here for years. He has no bias toward developers. He has a bias for what's good for the town. And in any given case, he might be wrong, but in every case, he's exercising his best judgment. Someone said it, and it's correct. If you have gripes about the commission, that's fair. It is not fair to tag it all on him. That is not fair. You want someone who's doing the job as best they can. He is, Peter, John, and I, after a lot of thought, decided he should be renominated. I urge you to vote yes.
All right. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, item number 12, Richard Maitland, and proceed to poll your delegation. We do have two more items, so we will continue. Item 16 now comes before us. Kathleen La Balbo, District Two. Catherine.
Item 16, we, the undersigned registered voters of the town of Greenwich, hereby request the R T M consider and act upon the following resolution.
All right, hang on, just hang on one minute, please. All right, I ask that the district chairs please conduct the voting quietly, and we thereby can give, do attention to our speaker. Go ahead.
Be it resolved, the R T M form a special committee of its members, including members from land use, park and rec, finance, D P W, and education committees, for the purpose of reporting to the elective body of the R T M on the field remediation at Western Middle School, implementation of the 2018-2019 C I P study of field improvements at Central Middle School, and lastly, to present a sense of the meeting resolution, consistent with Appendix A, powers and functions of the R T M in regards to all public fields of the town of Greenwich.
All right, thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 16, which came to us from petition, has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Who would like to go first? Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
The Public Works Committee took up this item on behalf of resident petitioners. It's a resolution put forth by Mrs. Catherine La Balbo, La Balbo, sorry, of District Two, who is Vice Chair of Parks and Rec.
All right, I'm hearing requests that you speak more directly into the microphone.
Okay, I'll try again. Can you hear me now? Okay, good. I have to stand closer. We took this up, this item, on behalf of resident petitioners, and the resolution was put forth by Ms. Catherine La Balbo, who just, you just heard, District Two, Vice Chair of Parks and Rec, to create a special R T M committee that would study and report back to us their findings regarding three parks and rec issues. Field remediation at Western Middle School, implementation of the 2018-19 C I P, which had an approved budget of $300,000 to pay for a consultant study of field improvements at Central Middle School, and update an inventory of all the fields in the town of Greenwich, which have been diminished in number since 1998, and to plan for additional fields, manage existing fields, and study their uses, given the need for additional field hours. Mrs. La Balbo explained that neither the Board of Education nor Parks and Rec had, had neither the time and resources to collect information. It noted that such a special committee should include members represented by land use, parks and rec, finance, public works, and education. We had a spirited and lengthy discussion about the composition of the member, and the number of members, after which the committee took a vote on this item as written, which was ten in favor and one opposed, with District Ten absent. The member from District Eleven, who opposed this motion, based that opposition on the word "implement," which was cited in the action list from the 2009 P O C D document. The purpose of this resolution was for this special committee to produce a report to be presented to the R T M sometime before next budget, or next budget decision, no later than the April meeting. The discussion that followed her opposition led us to seriously consider the argument made by this member, who reminded us that nothing could be implemented until we, as a full R T M, heard the report. The committee agreed unanimously that the resolution, which we had just supported, did need to be rewritten and revised. We didn't take a vote on that because we had taken a previous vote, but we urged them to please revise their resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Perelli Minetti, Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee took this up last Monday night. This is a sense of the meeting resolution that we come to, I think, with great mixed feelings, because I think everyone understands that we have a fields problem and that we don't seem to be getting anywhere, getting it solved. I think that Ms. La Ballo and Miriam Kreutzer, who presented it to the Finance Committee, are to be commended for wanting to try to find a solution. Unfortunately, the strong sense in finance was that the resolution as written was unworkable. They had no idea how the committee was going to be actually established, who was going to be on it, how would members be chosen, what would its real brief be, what sort of authority would it be? Some people even thought that instead of actually making a solution, more likely that it would delay getting a solution, so we had a lot of concerns with this. In fact, the first thing that the Finance Committee did after about a 40-minute discussion on this was to move to ask the proponents to withdraw this item so that it would not, so that they could fix it and bring it back in a way everybody could support it. That motion carried nine, three, zero. Districts Two, Nine, and Eleven were opposed, but that was, they were not necessarily in favor of the way it was, they just didn't think that we ought to be telling them to withdraw it. A motion was then made to postpone it, and if they decide, if the proponents did not decide to withdraw the motion, we thought that it was appropriate to postpone it indefinitely until they can rewrite it and fix it. So the Finance Committee moved to postpone the item 16 indefinitely, and the vote on that was ten, two, and zero, and Items Two and Nine, Districts Two and Nine opposed. The no votes were due to the concern that postponing this committee would postpone getting a solution. And again, that was, there were mixed feelings about that. I would really like to see this come back to us in some form that could be effective, but I just don't think it can be the way it's written, so the Finance Committee moves to postpone.
Thank you. Andy Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Very similar report. Everyone recognizes the need. This is well-intentioned, and there is a longstanding problem with the fields and insufficient progress to solve the problem or come up with a plan. However, the committee felt that the item was not workable as written and was not able to be fixed with a simple amendment. Therefore, the committee voted to suspend the item indefinitely with the intention of coming back with a better plan in the future.
Thank you.
The vote was 12, 0, 0.
Thank you. Jennifer Freitag, Secretary of our Education Committee.
We sort of had a similar sense in our committee as what you've heard from others. We recognize and are very cognizant of the fact that there are many issues with the fields, both in terms of having a sufficient number of playable hours available, and also a lot of questions from people about what type of turf is appropriate for different fields, et cetera, and there's a lot of debate about that. Our concern, so while we have sympathy with the fact that there is definitely an issue and it needs to be addressed, and we feel that the proponents' intentions were very good and, you know, something definitely needs to be done, we were concerned with the item as it was presented. We felt that it was unclear, you know, what the real mandate of the committee was, how committee members would be selected, what would be the timing of any reports generated, would the committee's work be duplicative of work that was being done by other town committees, bodies, and such as the Board of Ed, the First Selectmen, Department of Parks and Rec. And so, in the end, we voted against the item, eleven against, one abstention. That was District Nine, and she said that she felt the intentions behind the proposal were good, but that there was a problem with its proposed execution.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
So the Land Use Committee spent some time with Ms. La Balbo. We thought that she was working in the right direction. There was no serious opposition. Our vote on this item was nine in favor, two opposed, with District Five absent. District Six had an issue with scope, and District Eleven felt that the plan needs refinement.
Thank you. Mr. Perelli Minetti.
Just, the Finance Committee moves to postpone this item indefinitely.
All right, so that motion to postpone indefinitely is a motion to kill, has the effect of killing the item. If you are in favor of disposing of this, you would vote yes on this motion to postpone indefinitely. If you want to consider this item further tonight, you should vote no. Discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. All right, I will have to call for a record vote on this. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Finance Committee, motion postpone item 16 indefinitely, and proceed to poll your delegation. We do have one more item. We will take that up, and if we need, based on the result of this vote, if we need to come back to it, we will then do that. I do have the result of the vote on item 12, which is the appointment of Richard Maitland to Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, 72; opposed, 98; abstaining, 12. That item has failed. All right, the final item to come before us is item 18. Peter Bernstein, Chairman of the Board of Education.
This is the item for the repair of the leak at the COSCOB school.
Right into the mic there, if you could.
Sure. This is the repair of the leak at the COSCOB school that occurred on October 7th. The Board of Education met on Thursday, voted seven, zero for an interim appropriation. The B E T met on Friday morning and took a vote 11, zero. We thank the R T M for adding this to the agenda at the last minute and appreciate your speed. So it is resolved that the sum of $1,905,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated from reserve for capital and nonrecurring fund to account Z 6809560, project 19208, for costs associated with the remediation of COSCOB flood damage.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 18 has been moved and seconded. Jennifer Freitag with the Education Committee report.
Good evening once again. Peter Bernstein, Chair of the Board of Ed, and Interim Superintendent Ralph Mayo presented this item to us on Monday evening. They explained, as I'm sure many of you have heard, that there had been a burst pipe over a weekend in COSCOB school that led to very significant damage at the school building. The school was closed for one week. At this point, grades three and five are now back in the building, and grades K through two have been displaced and are using classrooms at Old Greenwich and Parkway Schools. Half of the school that was badly damaged has been sealed off from the rest of the school, and remediation work has begun, I think, about two weeks ago. They do have security guards in place, two of them daily, to ensure that there's no interaction between the workers and the students, and they're doing daily air quality testing to make sure that the environment is safe for those students that are back in the building. The Board of Ed has requested $1,905,000 to cover the repair work and the costs associated with relocating the students and conducting school sessions with construction ongoing in the building. It is our understanding that they're working with the town to file appropriate insurance claims, and we were told that the insurance policy that they're making the claims under has a $100,000 deductible. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm being corrected that it was $25,000 deductible. Their priority is to get the work done quickly and safely and to minimize disruption for families and COSCOB. We're very much in support of this appropriation as a committee. We also commend members of the Board of Ed and administrators and teachers and first responders who did so much to save as much as they could when it first came to light that there was an issue with water in the building. Our only concern and the only question that we raised was why the Board of Ed was only asking for the mid-range estimate for their expected construction costs. We wanted to know how would it intend to get additional funds if needed, given that the R T M does not meet in November. Mr. Bernstein said that, told us that the Board of Ed feels comfortable with the estimate and believes that it will be sufficient to complete enough work to get the students back into the school building sometime in December. He also stated that if there is a need for additional money, the Board believes that they can phase any additional construction to do finish work over the December vacation, and that it would not, in fact, propose a problem for them. So the committee approved this request 12, 0, 0.
Thank you. Rob Perelli Minetti with Finance Committee report.
Yeah, Superintendent Ralph Mayo, Peter Bernstein, and Rob Stacey presented this item to us last Monday night. I just want to start out by saying that this is exactly the kind of a situation in which we want people to come to us for an interim appropriation. The school administration and the school board should be commended for their prompt attention to this matter and the way in which they've handled it so far. They've done, they were within the school as soon as the alarm went off, and they were immediately working to get this item fixed. This is a, you know, you can't predict things like this. These things do happen, and I think that it's essential that we give the Board of Education the funds they need for this repair. It was wonderful to learn that the insurance deductible is only $25,000 instead of $100,000, which is what people thought last Monday. So I think that this is probably one of the easiest votes that anybody's going to have this year's. Finance Committee voted to support this 12, 0, 0.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo with a report from our Public Works Committee.
Everything's been said. Our vote, Public Works, was 11, 0, 0. District Ten absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 18. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, item 18, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will need to await the tally on the pending votes on 16 and 18 before we can proceed to adjourn. So I ask that our district chairs expedite the voting, please. All right, I have the result of the vote on item 16. That was the motion to form a committee, I'm sorry, no, it was a motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely. This was the Finance Committee motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely. Those in favor, 150, 5-0. Opposed, 20, abstaining, two. That item, that motion to postpone indefinitely has carried. And one more item, item 18. We have the result of the vote on item 18, the COSCOB school appropriation. Those in favor, 169, opposed, zero, abstaining, zero. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.